Ready? You guys ready?
Yes.
You all ready?
Yes.
Good evening. Welcome to West Covina City Council meeting. Okay, today is April 7th. We used the teleconference. I apologize, we have some technical issue. But right now it's seven twenty, seven twenty-one and we have a meeting in session. And today, due to we have this pandemic, so that's why by our city council, all use the teleconference. And then we will have the livestream and with presentation on TV. So everybody can see, okay, here's the presentation. And tonight invocation will be led by our city manager, Dave Conami, followed by the pledge of religion, led by assistant city clerk, Lisa Cherry. All right, please? And city manager, go ahead.
We know that the prayers of the righteous are powerful and effective. Heavenly Father, tonight we're thankful and grateful for the blessings of this community. Seek your guidance and wisdom in these tumultuous times. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 That's what you do. Through the fire of the United States of America.
Thanks. Of merit. To the Father. And the mission of God. This is about the Lord. And the Lord of all. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Have a seat. And assistant city clerk, go ahead, please.
Yes. Councilman Castellanos.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Schumaker.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lopez Viata.
I want.
Mayor Wu.
Yes, okay. And city attorney, do you have anything we call out for our call question?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And now we have two proclamation. And the first one is the DMV Donate Life California Month. And assistant city clerk, would you read the proclamation?
I will read a little bit about DMV Donate Life California Month. April is National Donate Life Month, a time when donate life organizations across the country start to make life possible by educating and motivating individuals to register their decision to the organ, eye, and tissue donor. We wish you a happy National Donate Life Month. Thank you for your efforts in promoting organ, eye, and tissue donation and the importance of registering your decision. In California, it means checking yes every time at the DMV or signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org.
Thank you. And then we moving to.
Proclamation.
Now, national public safety telecommunications week. And our city clerk, would you please read the proclamation?
Yes. Every year during the second week of April, the telecommunications personnel and the public safety community are honored. This week-long event initially set up in nineteen eighty-one by Tricia Anderson. The county sheriff's office in California is a time to celebrate and thank those who dedicate their lives to serve in the public. It is a week that should be set aside so everyone can be made aware of their hard work and dedication.
Thank you so much. Now we're moving on to oral communication. Do we have any person standing before six thirty? And do we have any person want to dial in? And how many we have?
Through the chair, we have three individuals who wanted their comments read into the public.
Okay, go ahead.
No calling.
Okay, proceed.
The first one is Herb, thank you, Herb Redhope. Good evening, honorable mayor, city council, city managers, staff, and residents. In light of the current horrific pandemic that we are experiencing, I believe that this city must contact our elected representatives in Sacramento to urge them to revisit, reconsider, and rescind the dangerous new laws affecting our R1 zones, our single-family neighborhoods, and our population density. As you know, these new laws eliminated minimum lot sizes for ADUs, dramatically reduced or eliminated setback requirements, and opened up the ability to have multiple residences on a single lot. SB fifty would allow multi-story housing in single-family neighborhoods. Can you imagine the number of COVID-19 cases we would be facing if our neighborhoods were this congested today? So many people passed into small lots, frightening. Now is the time to contact our elected in Sacramento to take action that will save lives, as this is ultimately the last time we will face this. This is unlikely the last time we will face this type of crisis. Thank you for listening. That was our first speaker.
Next. Go ahead.
Our next speaker is from this, our next speaker is from Mr. John Anderson. Mayor Wu, city council members. This request for a left turn lane into Christ Lutheran Parking Lot is an issue that should not be shelved. This is an item that has no detractors. The proposal of the engineering firm does not impact any curbside parking on the east side of Citrus Avenue. It is, however, a safety issue for our children. It is only a matter of time before the next injury accident at this location, possibly even a fatalistic casualty victim. Right now, with the school closed and significantly lighter traffic on Citrus Avenue, is the time to perform the work. It will be far simpler to perform the necessary traffic control during the work. Since many of the contractors who perform this work have light workload, it will probably be less expensive for the citizens. This is an opportunity for a real win-win project for the city of West Covina. Please approve this measure at the next meeting and expedite the work so it can be completed during the unique window of opportunity. That is the end of my public speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Thanks, please.
The next public speaker is Mr. Patrick Bosick. I am Patrick Bosick, West Covina resident and sound contractor who provided the sound protection for your summer concert from two thousand eleven to two thousand seventeen. In December twenty seventeen and January twenty eighteen, I addressed the council about JWC Associates, Rudy Lopez, and Monica Fier. Failing to honor and fulfill an agreement of consideration for the twenty thirteen concert series, there were two elements, but only one was honored. I addressed this initially as an incomplete contract. However, what has been done to me, I have realized more recently, is an act of fraud and still within a criminal statute of limitations. January twenty eighteen, your assistant city manager, Nicole Resianni, responded and we had an email exchange where she advised me that I should speak with Anthony McIntyre as he was the meeting GWC board of directors, but expressed that his contact information is private, thus actually a lie, and that she will have him contact me. I never heard from McIntyre. Within days of that email exchange, there is colluded in retaliation to both Resianni and McIntyre. More well-connected, she proceeded at that point in time. In January twenty eighteen, the city was done working with me and all associates did not respond to any further communications from me. I sent two more emails in February twenty eighteen to community services and council. One was about talent programming with a recommendation to new concerts from various human base, human base, which the city did so. Monica Fier responded to that email because the retaliation had already been colluded. And then an email explaining that I did not do any further service with the mariachi people, as some of the female mariachis are witches who participate in acts of bruhah. That is a Mexican word that means witchcraft. In that email, I also expressed that I wanted to work and would be happy to move to explain this in greater detail. The private sector and the municipal arena, I have serviced that artist more than fifty times. I am witness to this. There is a spiritual pollution that comes with this act and may disown wholesome for municipalities to celebrate this. I was being noble in addressing it, but again, no reply from anyone. Again, other retaliations had already been colluded. Last year, I sent an email with some good and rightful information to Mayor Johnson, but again, no reply. What I had learned from all of this is that a morally ignorant municipality with bigotry and cronyism weighs more precedence in policy decision-making than that of wisdom and insight. Mayor Wu and Councilman Johnson are the naive and gullible idiot worshippers where morality doesn't exist. From the top down, there is a preference to the violator that's shameful. So in hopes of getting some answers, I visited the council again on September third and scheduled to meet you with Resianni for the phone Thursday morning. Upon entering her office, there's Mike Crespo and Judy Perez. As I enter, Resianni says, because you wouldn't work with the mariachi divas, she decided not to meet you. I'm sat down on the couch next to Crespo while Resianni and Perez sitting higher up on stools, not a respectful setup at all. And she, and he says, there were performance issues. You asked for an advocate to cover the insurance, and you read her post in this eye-rolling form of criticism as if just not up to her standards of hoarding toward the best cooking house. In the seven years I've serviced the concert series, those were never issued. And in twenty seventeen, it was expressed that, advance is not a problem. The email exchange between January twenty eighteen, Resianni wrote, we had a good working relationship and there were no problems. But Crespo said that, he stupid. I addressed what I knew, that Monica Ferraris was soon to be relation, and Resianni played it down. I hardly even talked to her. Again, another lie. I insisted, and Resianni started becoming more defensive about it in her denying. Judy Ferraris said something to me that I don't remember, but she said it in a harsh manner. She displayed a type of hatred and contempt that's influenced by something she's heard that was dangerous. I brought up the service, you are now maybe have problems. That is true. There were sound problems in twenty eighteen with the divas and cold weather. Resianni argued, we got that taken care of, not really. On a recording of a performance last summer, there was feedback through its entirety. Any technician can have feedback, but what separates the nents from the boys is how fast they correct it. The five minutes are up. Mayor Wu, would you like me to continue or would you like me to stop?
Uh, there, that's it. Okay, five minutes up. Okay, thank you so much. Then we move on to next. There will be the manager report. Managers, okay, our city manager, Dave Conami, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members of the public. I'm going to ask the assistant city manager to put our city manager report PowerPoint up on the screen. I've just got a couple of items that I wanted to highlight tonight. First slide, please. First, I think the biggest news of the day, and this is a quite fluid situation that's changing every day, the city is continuing to respond to the COVID-19 virus. One of the climbs, dramatic climbs in the number in terms of infections in this county has highlighted a need for more testing. So today, I'm quite pleased to announce that we've stood up a partnership with Aftamed at thirteen hundred Sunset here in West Covina to help the city residents by providing emergency assistance and healthcare to those that are affected by the coronavirus pandemic. West Covina residents would be asked to be prescreened before showing up at the location. Again, that's thirteen hundred Sunset. By the prescreen process, they'll be interviewed and then ultimately screened for all the respiratory symptoms, vitals taken, and if the symptoms indicate, there'd be a rapid flu and strep test administered. Finally, then and only then, a COVID-19 test would be administered at needed. So repeating for emphasis, residents are encouraged to call first. The number's on the screen. It's eight 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 four nine 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 three zero three, or area code five six two two zero five four three zero nine. This information is going to be on the city's website tomorrow, and it'll be available as part of this meeting broadcast for people who want to review it. But I'll just give that toll-free number again. It's for testing and screening, eight 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 four nine 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 three zero three. Next slide, please, Mark.
Earlier tonight, as part of the proclamations, council honored telecommunications personnel. But I think the city workforce is quite strong, and all of the workers are functioning as disaster service workers who are maintaining continuity of revenue, who are protecting life and protecting property. We've begun, as this slide shows, the capital improvement projects program that was awarded bid. This particular slide shows the parking lot at Cortez Park being reconstructed. And once we got down that first course of asphalt overlay, it was a marked difference. I think this would be a very good time for the city to continue to drive out these capital projects. I think the prices are going to be quite competitive. This one's competitively bid. We think the bid price is going to get much better. This next slide highlights our senior meal program. Prior to the pandemic, we were serving in congregate fashion, a meal, and the city chef was cooking it for our seniors in our senior and rec center. Now we've transitioned that program, and we're delivering meals. So if ever there's a need for people that need a meal, our seniors need a meal, we're bringing it to them. A limited number of meals are still being passed out. At the drive-through, also, we're including some homeless that have no other home other than their car, but we're feeding them and we're welcoming those people that need those services to please call us at the senior center. Next slide. I wanted to share a bit of good news in terms of ongoing projects of the city pertaining to the Plaza West Covina Mall redevelopment. This is a slide, an artist depiction, an architect's rendering of what the repositioned mall would look like. We're working quite closely with Starwood on the processing of these plans for public and council consideration. We're finalizing the documents that'll come to the signing commission and ultimately to the city council. Point to be made about that Plaza West Covina project is Starwood is a big national concern. They've got one project that they're now continuing to process plans for, and that's West Covina. So we've got a strong partnership with them, and we're going to continue to bring their projects forward for the towns to consider. We're also continuing to work on a very timely project, which is the long-term expansion of Queens Valley Hospital. We're going to be processing plans with a tougher hearing, and it's a low process by which the city council would be asked to endorse financing to help this project proceed. And that is something that's going to be on our council agenda. We're aiming for a May cycle for that. Next slide, please. I wanted to report that we've hired as the local enforcement agency person, Steve Sanmiego. Steve was previously with the city and did an excellent job during his tenure as someone who fulfilled that role for the city. We are continuing to work with the regulatory agencies, the DTSC, and the Cal Recycle officials, and they are going to be watching the city very closely. There'll be a public hearing, so they might monitor our project, but we think we found the right man for the job, and we say welcome to Steve. That's all I've got for manager's report tonight. Mayor, I think we're ready for the next item. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. Now we're moving to consent calendars. Okay, we have twelve items. Okay, any council member want to pull, or do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Mayor, Councilman Johnson, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Mayor Proton, let's go, please. I'm second.
So I have councilman Lloyd Johnson moved the motion to approve the consent calendar from one to twelve, and I have Mayor Proton, Mayor Lopez Viata, second. Go ahead, please. Lisa? Hello?
Councilman Castellanos. Yes.
Hi.
Councilman, okay. Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lopez Viata?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye. Okay, approve five zero. Then we're moving to the fiscal year, Department Regular Managers, Community Development, fiscal year twenty nineteen dash to twenty twenty, capital improvement program status update presentation. And the city manager, who is going to present the staff report.
And council, our city engineers, Ahmad Ansari and Mr. Akhan Damitcheh from TransTech, the city's contracted engineering firm, will present the staff report this evening.
Uh, go ahead.
So I'm up here. Is it ready? Um, Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, while we're waiting for Ahmad to start, um, I can give a little bit of background and, uh, let the council and the public know.
Go, yeah, go ahead. Put them in.
Thank you. Um, what we have fully canceled on the public this evening is an update on the capital improvement program, what our new engineering firm, TransTech, has been working on. You saw in the city manager's report, a contract that the city council recently approved, which has been kicked off, a street improvement project, a paving project. There was an item on consent, a second, very significant street improvement project that the city council approved. So we have made very significant progress in capital improvement projects. We also want to talk about some upcoming projects between now and the end of the fiscal year and talk about timelines. I think it is helpful to kind of briefly go through and get a piece of knowledge on starting a special project.
Your cell phone?
Sorry, Steve.
Yeah, continue, please.
Yes, thank you. Um, so there are multiple steps to go through between the conception of a project, the planning of a project, the scoping of a project, um, the design works that goes into it, and then the bidding and construction. So this is just a brief overview of the steps involved. And there are.
Hello, Mark?
Yes.
Uh, can you hear me? This is Ahmad. We are on the, we are on the call, but I had difficulty with my microphone on my laptop. But I called on my cellphone, and I'm ready to do the presentation, Mark.
Perfect. Come on. If you would like to pick up and kind of go into the eight project categories, I think that would be helpful.
All right, go ahead. Can everyone hear me? Yes. Yeah, okay. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton, members of the city council. Pleasure to be here, even though not physically. Um, the purpose of tonight's presentation, as Mark indicated, is to give an overview of what has been done so far in terms of the city engineering services handling CIP projects and what to expect by the time we return to the city council at the end of the fiscal year in June of twenty twenty. So on this slide, we wanted to quickly let the city council know the different categories of the CIP projects in West Covina. Next slide, please. Next slide. Okay, so we're going to begin with the status of projects that are in the works right now. The first one is the major street rehab. This project has been completed. This was Cameron from Azusa to Baranca. The cost was a million dollars. Um, and the reimbursement request, the child trans, was sent in February of this year, last month, a couple months ago. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide. The next project is a two-point-eight-million-dollar, is a sewer lift station, twenty-seven-hundred Azusa Avenue, which is under construction, and it's going to complete by fall of twenty twenty. Next slide, please. Next project is pavement management program update. The cost is seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, the professional services agreement was awarded by the city council in February of this year, and we anticipate to complete it by summer of twenty twenty. Uh, just a side note, pavement management system is a very critical tool for the city, all the cities, to be able to secure state and federal grants for various pavement-related type of projects. Next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide is assessments, engineering services. Um, this is related to sewer services charges and a bunch of special districts and CFCs and landscape and lighting districts. The cost of this project is a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and the city council awarded in February the contract, and this is an annual services. Next project? Next slide. Okay, this one is of interest to the city council. I know that the residential streets, paving and repairs is very near and dear to the city council heart. This one is two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen residential street rehab. Um, this will pave over one-point-two-million-square feet of pavement. It's basically an area that is, uh, to the west to Azusa Avenue, to the east to Grant, south of the Thames Freeway, and pretty much north of Cameron. Uh, the cost is one-point-three-million-dollar, um, and is, this project is under construction as of April, and we anticipate it to complete in, uh, June of twenty twenty. It encompasses a lot of paving, curb and gutter repair, and, um, and there are a variety of different asphalt measures on the street. Next slide, please. This one, um, which is in the works, is Cortez Park Parking Lot Rehabilitation Station. This is near Citrus and Cortez. Cost at two-hundred-thousand dollars, and it's under construction from April to May of twenty twenty. Uh, it's a short project. Next slide, please. Not too far from Cortez Park Parking Lot that I just mentioned is the senior center restroom renovation. This is a three-hundred-thousand-dollar. City council awarded the, uh, construction contract on March of seventeen, March seventeen of twenty twenty, and will be under construction later this month, maybe early May to summer of twenty twenty. Next slide, please. So so far, we have covered what has been in the works as far as the current, currently in progress CIP projects. Uh, there are a variety of other projects that are going to be in the works, and I'm going to begin with the next slide, which and, um, I'm gonna begin with the next slide, which is the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty residential street rehab. This general area of street repair, based on the previous one that I mentioned, it's, um, pretty much, uh, found by Azusa to the west, Grant to the east, and it's in the, uh, southern east core area of the city, below Vine and, uh, Cameron, all the way to the city limits. Uh, this project pays approximately, approximately one point seven million square feet at one point two million and this is, uh, this was on the agenda tonight, uh, for the award of the construction contract. We anticipate, uh, to complete by end of June, uh, of, of this, this year. Next slide, please. This one is, uh, pedestrian improvements at Orange Avenue. I'm darned, streets of hundred thousand dollars. Uh, this was, uh, like a flooded crosswalk, uh, you know, and it was pedestrian safety. This was also on the agenda tonight for construction award and, uh, we anticipate it to complete this summer. Next slide, please. Next one is, um, the MTD S or MS four. This is related to the, uh, water quality act. Um, the city, um, services that are required for this, uh, have been delayed for a while, so we, uh, engineering department, uh, issued RFP, could you see proposals on March twenty sixth? And the proposals are currently being reused and we are, uh, trying to, uh, complete the staff report and schedule for award of the contract for the city council during the next, uh, next few, uh, council meetings, uh, maybe in May. Next slide, please. This project, um, is more of an annual contract and maintenance. Um, this has to do with the tree trimming services, which handles the tree trimming in the maintenance district as well as the city park. And, uh, we are anticipating to award, uh, the, uh, the service contract, uh, later this, uh, this spring, maybe May or June. Next slide, please. This one is, uh, two thousand twenty, twenty one, um, residential street rehab. Uh, this is, this is still in the works and the design stage. The exact location has not been determined and we anticipate to, uh, finish the design after the fir-, after the, uh, beginning of the new fiscal year in July and then complete the project by spring of 2021, next year. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And this one is a major street rehabilitation, um, which is Azusa Avenue within the city limits. I believe the northernly city limit is, uh, pretty close to the U and the southerly city limit is in, uh, Temple Avenue. This is also in the works and anticipated completion, uh, it's, it's next year. Next slide, please. So we have covered, uh, two areas, uh, a total of thirteen projects, uh, which, um, includes the projects that are currently in the progress and what the city council should expect by the end of the fiscal year. Next slide, please. One of the, one of the things that, um, I wanted to share with the city council is a tool that is, um, is for, um, reporting and monitoring the CIP projects. We like to call it the CIP color bar chart. You know, as you see on the slide, basically it lists all the projects. You know, it has very little reading for anyone to report to. And then, you know, as you can see from the color bars, um, we have the design change, the good advertising and awarding green and then the construction in orange. You know, so right on the spot, you know, if, uh, city staff or members of the public or city council want to take a look at a particular project as far as the status, you know, uh, it was in design or what the duration of construction would be, they can take a look at this tool and, uh, right, right there they will have, uh, uh, a summary of the schedule. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide. Okay, so, um, so this concludes the PowerPoint presentation of these projects that, uh, we have been handling and what to expect by the end of the fiscal year. One of the other things that I wanted to share with the city council before we come back to the city council in June, um, engineering department is working on, uh, providing, uh, and preparing, um, individual sheet, information sheets for each of the CIP projects. Uh, in other words, for each of the CIP projects, the city council will see in the budget split, uh, an information sheet which has the title of the project, the description of the project, the justification, um, all the financial information, uh, how much budget, uh, what account, uh, number, uh, the budgets are allocated from, uh, as well as the location map and a, uh, picture of, uh, the project. You know, whether it is the location or a building or facility or roadway. In June, we also, uh, going to do budget reconciliation for the CIP projects and the city council will receive a true-up report on all the CIP. Um, in addition to what I have covered tonight as far as the overall, uh, overview of the CIP, there are a number of, uh, neighborhood traffic signal type projects that, uh, is, they have been in the works and, uh, you know, they're either contingent upon community meeting input before they are brought back to the city council. Examples are Cameron and Citrus, uh, Cameron and Baranca, Forte and La Fuente and so on. Um, some of these projects, as the city council is aware, has been delayed because of the current virus situation and we're waiting to see how we can, um, manage the, um, community meetings and, uh, you know, virtual or teleconferencing and get input on those projects. In addition to the, the traffic signal project, I know that, um, Azusa traffic signal synchronization is very important to the city council. Um, in fact, today we had a conference call with LA County, uh, the gentleman who is the section head for the traffic signal operation and they have visited the area, uh, the traffic signal synchronization study. Uh, is the entire corridor and multi-jurisdiction that goes from the two ten freeway all the way to the sixty freeway. Uh, but again, you know, because of the, uh, coronavirus delays, uh, they cannot get the real traffic assessments. So that's another area that has been delayed. But hopefully we can put it to the, uh, front burner and, uh, get the synchronization going. In that effort, not only the city of West Covina is involved, but also city of industry, Covina, LA Metro, and as I said, LA Town. Uh, that was my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, uh, council, does anybody have any question? Okay, if not, I have a question for you. If you have a question, go ahead.
No, no, I said none.
Okay, uh, um, Ahmad, I have a question for you. Um, okay, I remember we have approved project for Shadow Bathroom. Do you know anything about this? I think we have approved project, we have approved, but due to the delay and, uh, they accumulated the budget. So, um, you didn't include in this, okay, CIP. So I don't know when we are going to have that, uh, Shadow Bathroom really make it happen. Because this is my understanding, it was approved, okay, and then the delay and then because the budget, so do you know anything about this? It's, Ahmad, do you know anything about the budget?
Uh, Mayor, you were cut off for a few seconds. What was the name of the project again?
It's a, it's a Shadow Oak Park. Supposedly we are going to build a bathroom down below and then we're gonna really, uh, do the, uh, parking lot and due to, okay, and the original, I think it's about three hundred, uh, become five hundred. Okay, so accumulate and that's why the delay. Supposedly they should have started doing some construction last year, but I don't know why continued to delay. So if you don't know the project, I know you admit it because you hired last year, but, uh, this, if this is, this is still a approved project.
Okay, um, I am not too familiar with the details of the project, but I did take notes, uh, Mayor, and I'm gonna look into it and, uh, we definitely gonna add it to the, uh, to the list, for sure.
Yes, because I told you have a co- yeah, go ahead.
If, if I, I don't, this is, that's right. They're supposed to use park funds, uh, to do that, you know, from the Sunset Hill money that come in, purpose of all the money division, use that money to pay for that. If I'm correct, I could be wrong. Maybe the city manager can answer that.
Yeah, okay, city manager, do you, do you know anything about this Shadow Oak? Because it's supposed to, you have the Shadow Oak Park and the bathroom maybe, I don't know, ten years ago and five years ago and it's still continued to delay and hopefully, okay, we can make this thing happen. So maybe you can, maybe share some light with us?
Certainly will. That was a project for which the city had intended to use restricted funds. In fact, all of these capital projects are restricted funds. We don't have general fund money in the CIP at the moment. But I will, um, with the city engineer, return with a status report concerning the, the property restricted funds in the, in that park bathroom project. Mayor and council, I'll, I'll get that back in as requested.
Okay, very good. So, so please, okay, check into the Shadow Oak Park, okay, the bathroom park there and then hopefully confirm that shares including this, uh, CIP. And any other council have any question?
Uh, Mayor Proton Lopez Viado.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just want to say, I do like the CIP schedule tool that makes it easy to read the status of each project. Uh, where would this, um, tool be located and how often is it updated?
Okay, uh, that's a very good question. Uh, what we have, uh, as far as that CIP color bar chart, um, uh, they are regularly updated. You know, we have regular meetings with the city staff, um, and this, uh, presentation as well as a more, um, detailed matrix of various tasks with, within each project are discussed and then this one is updated. Uh, it is fair to say, councilmember, that on a monthly basis, this, um, this report gets updated and we are also thinking of perhaps, uh, uh, displaying it on city website so that it could have, uh, uh, it could be accessible by not only the city council but also the general public.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Okay, any other, any other questions, council?
Yes.
Go ahead.
My question is, at a couple of meetings, um, Mayor Proton, Lopez Viado and I brought up, um, life and, um, security cameras at our parks and we asked if it'd be part of the discussion for CIP movie board. So it's not, it, have we made any steps for looking into that?
I'm sorry, uh, is that on the table? Were, were you talking about this specific project?
Uh, this would actually be a question for the city manager.
Okay, so... Um, okay, councilwoman, okay, uh, Shoemaker, can you repeat your question again? Which box?
Actually, Mayor, if I may respond to, uh, councilwoman Shoemaker's question. Um, we are in the process of updating or trailing up to five-year CIP and we will bring that to the council in June. That will be part of the, um, overall schedule and budget. It wasn't in tonight's presentation, we wanted to kind of update the council on what has happened thus far, what we have going ahead for the balance of the year, which is just a couple of months. And then we will return, uh, councilwoman, in June and it will be part of that, uh, five-year updated CIP.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, councilman?
This is Mayor Proton Lopez Viado. Thank you so much, uh, councilmember Jessica, for bringing that up. So I just wanted to reinforce, uh, that, uh, the security cameras and lights are, uh, make sure to be part of this, uh, part of the project. Um, so look forward to seeing that in June. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to, you can fire?
I motion, councilwoman, I mean, Mayor Proton, Mayor Proton Lopez Viado, I, uh, motion to, uh, receiving fire.
About second. Okay, so we have, uh, Mayor Proton letting Lopez Viado make a motion to the CIP and spoken by the councilmember Lloyd Johnson. And the local, please.
Councilman Costa Lano.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye, motion approved, five zero. Okay, thank you. Then we move on to the, any of, uh, AC one, two, three, four reports from council? No. Do you have any, do you have any comments or anybody wants to have any statement? Or, uh, may I?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment after, but may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to say, you know, about, uh, a comment to our city manager. I know he made a comment on his presentation about, uh, I don't know what I can do for the, uh, people I heard in the city of Covina. Uh, I know that the mayor of Los Angeles declared anybody that lives in LA County, no matter what your age is right now, are allowed to take a test with the, uh, least criteria. And I think that's a great thing. So, but my only question was, uh, if we're gonna screen a resident for like a strip show or whatever it is, would the car be troubled and then we're gonna, uh, test the cal-, uh, the, uh, test, uh? Uh, I know that, uh, it only takes about five minutes to take that test the five days down today and I took it at, uh, LSA guy. So, uh, I'm curious about, uh, with the car trouble, with the car, the main thing became what?
That's all. So you please do a, you please do a question?
Yes, the question is, what, uh, should the county about the same? As if they just took the test or did, would the test be twice as much? If they're going and they have to take a strip show test and they have to take something else and then kind of determine if they're not taking the test?
Okay, um, city manager, you want to respond to part of the question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, councilmember Johnson, for the question. We're breaking some new ground here in terms of city services in our res-... We're breaking some new ground here in terms of city services in our response to the coronavirus. The, the best answer I can give you with respect to the price to the city is that the contract that I've been working on with them would have the city and ultimate in partnership defraying the cost of this operation, which is now running at about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a week. We're gonna stand it up for three weeks and evaluate week to week whether it's needed on an ongoing basis. We may be at the crest of this pandemic or we may have much, much more work to do on a sustained basis, but the price, the cost to the resident, we're gonna bring this forward with a, a sliding scale based on income and ability to pay. I wanna make the point quite clearly, we're not gonna turn anyone away. I don't care if they're homeless, our only criteria is if they're sick, we want them to avail themselves of this service. So um, the city is supporting this, that we can make that happen, that people who are sick can get the screening and the testing that they need regardless of their ability to pay.
Uh, my understanding, who, on this funding, who's going to pay for it? Continue, okay, a response about, about where this funding coming from? It's come from CDBG fund, from HUD? City manager?
Correct. The, the city of West Covina and, and all cities are gonna receive some supplemental community dwelling block grant funding to address the, to the COVID crisis. In our case, that'll be north of some four hundred thousand dollars. HUD, this money was just enacted by the CARES Act. HUD has not promulgated regulations as to the precise rules, although we have been in direct communication with our local HUD officials, Rufus Washington and our program director, the people we work with all the time on our CDBG program. They say that these expenditures are eligible and on the strength of that, we've been working up a contract that we think comports with all the HUD requirements. But again, we're trying to roll this out quickly and we're moving as fast as we can just to get the service in place. We think the contract will follow and we're terribly confident this port that it'll all be paid for, the city's costs will be paid for through the, the HUD, CDBG COVID uh, fund.
Okay, very good. Okay, uh, any other question, uh, statement? Uh, other council have any statement or question?
Just a final comment, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, just like to ask all of our residents to continue being safe and staying at home and thank you for doing such a good job of that and I'd like to apologize for our audio. I know there was, there were some issues with our audio and we'll get it better next time. Thank you all. That's it, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, councilman Dario Castellanos. And any other council member want to have a statement?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I would also like to chime in with uh, councilman Castellanos, uh, wishing all of our residents to be safe, wishing all the best and please pay attention and stay home when you can, only go out when you have to and no congregating until we stick to the park. Thank you.
Thank you so much, councilman Johnson. Any other council member want to say something?
Uh, Mayor Protim, I just wanted to let the residents know to kindly be, be patient with this whole process. This is all new to everyone, so I know sometimes they'll like bash the same thing, um, thank you, councilmember Castellanos in regards to the audio, uh, that was the same thing I was thinking of, but um, we're always working to improve all these um, items, so please bear with us, be patient, um, and you know, we're, we're working and going through this and just, uh, thank you for all the residents, um, help with this whole city and, you know, we're limited with one, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protim, uh, Lopez Viato and any other, Jessica, you want to say something? No? Okay, uh, I just want to thank everybody, all the residents with their patience and cooperation. I know it's kind of tough, okay, and this is a pandemic and everybody really suffer and I want to thank the city staff. I think that they are basically about and beyond and they've stepped up to help our residents, especially, okay, our management team and all the staff and I want to thank, okay, and Sufi, okay, Perez for the community service, for the senior center, the mayor program, I was there a couple of times and I see how fast, how efficient and they, they helping out our senior or any people they need food, they will hang out and they will deliver and very efficient and I think we become a lot of residents of their current situation and again, uh, we are, okay, have this thing together and we're going to help each other and we will get through in no time and just please this couple weeks, please stay home, please be healthy and please use the mask and continue at the city, okay, at the senior center, we have a glove and we have a mask for you to pick up and if, if you already have a pre system ticket, let the needed people to have it if they have none and you are welcome to pick it up, okay, and want to, okay, to help yourself and for that, I want to wish everybody healthy and stay strong and we will get through together. And if you need any help, okay, talk to our city manager, talk to our city council, we will step up to help you. We are not going to let anybody, okay, and have no help at all. So for that, I want to wish you all the best, hopefully next time we can see each other, okay, in the city council meeting and at the regular meeting, all of that, I want to call for the June meeting, do I have a second? I have a second, thank you, ma'am. Okay, thank you so much, the meeting at June, I wish everybody have a healthy and have a good night, thank you so much. Okay, good night. You're safe today. Good night.